Call the Tuesday, April 23, 2019, work session of Portsmouth City Council. I'm Clark, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Mr. Glover.
Here.
Mrs. Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Mr. and Mrs. Eppson. Mayor Rowe.
Here. And I understand that Congressman Scott called and he's about now 10 minutes out. So let's start with number two, Dr. Patton.
All right, Mayor Vice Mayor, members of city council. This evening we have Mr. Steve Herbert, who has joined us from the Hampton Roads Economic Development Alliance, and he's the interim president and CEO, taking that position in January of 2019. Mr. Herbert oversees the staff and business development, business intelligence and marketing professionals, and leads the operations of a region's economic development organization that represents 11 municipalities and over 50 private sector investors. It is important that Mr. Herbert is here tonight because on our agenda tonight, we have an agreement, a master agreement for regional economic development between the Alliance and the Hampton Roads localities, that is on the city manager's agenda for your consideration tonight. We'll begin with Mr. Herbert.
Steve, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Dr. Patton, thank you for the opportunity to be here with you tonight. I have about a four-hour briefing, and I'll just go as fast as I can, and you tell me when to slow down. The master, Dr. Patton summed this up a lot better than I can, but the master agreement is a document, it's a first for economic development among the 11 cities and counties that make up the Alliance in Hampton Roads. It's been negotiated by the chief administrative officers for the past year, and it is intended to be a working agreement that solidifies relationships between the Alliance, the regional economic development activity, and each one of the localities, each one of the cities and counties in Hampton Roads. You can see the members of the Alliance in the first slide up here. The guiding precept for this document is that it is intended to stimulate growth of business, high-paying jobs, the tax base, the regional economy, and economic opportunity for the citizens, businesses, cities, and counties in Hampton Roads, region of Virginia. It recognizes the IBM Plant Location International Report, which was undertaken by the Planning District Commission with the consent of all the city managers. That was a report that essentially was adopted as the basis for the economic development strategic plan going forward. It identified some, oh, I've got, just about. These are the sectors that it identified, and these are the, these are the sectors that we are pursuing as a region. You can, you can see them listed here. They, for the first time now, are being approached on a regional basis. In all of our business development plans, we are focused on these activities, and, and we resource, we, we, we plan our trips, we plan our marketing, we plan our discussions around these basic strategic sectors. The document also includes some core principles. The core principles hold that going forward, this, this agreement will be the, the basis for good investor and customer relations. It will serve as a regional coordination for marketing. It will involve senior leadership. Every mayor of each one of these, of each one of these municipalities will be involved in the governance of the activity, and it will have sustainable resources. It's a three-year agreement. It begins, if it is approved by you, it begins in July 1st and runs for three years. The funding is approximately 50/50, half from the private sector and half from the public sector. The baseline funding, which you're going to see in a minute, is a little different because we're not able to get to 50/50 in the first year. So you'll see the baseline funding in just a second. There are certain obligations set forth in the Alliance, but in a nutshell, it is that every year we have to present to every one of you a plan, a business plan, for how we're going to market the region going forward. There are services and functions that, for the first time, are documented in here. The Alliance will be the lead and single point of contact for information for outside investors. The Alliance will develop a regional operating protocol with the state, which is, which we have been working hard on for the last three months. The Alliance will work collaboratively with each one of you, public investors. The Alliance will develop and manage the region's business retention program, and the Alliance will support each one of you in your efforts to close a deal. We'll also organize and manage the red team. Robert Moore is your representative as, as the economic development director for the city on the red team. We have reinstituted that. It's a regional economic development team. Every one of the 11, of 11 cities has a representative, and Robert is your representative on that. We will maintain and develop business intelligence. We will continue to produce all the, the labor force numbers that you see that come out every quarter, and, and we will also provide basic business intelligence for the business retention effort and for marketing effort. So that means that we are constantly assessing health, the economic health of the region and its individual businesses. And we'll provide an annual report. The end of the report, any year you get a report, and if you don't think the report matches up to what was promised in terms of deliverables, there's a process in here to correct for that. As for you as public investors, there are certain obligations. One, to recognize the role of the Alliance going forward, to provide your respective share of the funding, to appoint somebody to the red team, and to engage in the governance of the Regional Economic Development Alliance. There are services and functions that come from the public sector. That's to align your economic development strategy with the region's economic development strategy. That's an ongoing process. To cooperatively work with the Alliance, to improve our regional competitiveness, to support our business retention efforts, and to participate in our marketing and business development. To travel with us, to market with us, and to develop business with us as a region. The governance, the governance of the Alliance, as it presently stands, we, the language in this agreement says that sometime later this year, the board of directors will look at the current makeup of the board and see if there is another mix that would be more effective going forward. So there'll be a discussion about the role of the five largest cities and, and the other six cities, and what their relationship be, that so that everyone has a voice in the governance of the, of the Alliance going forward. And finally, this is the baseline funding for each of the 11 municipalities. That is included in this document that you'll, you will see, or you may already have a copy of. But I'll be, I'll be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Just Steve. Bill. Steve, on the fundraising for the private sector, how's that going to manifest itself?
Well, that's a good question. We are hard at work on that, and the, the ideal situation for this is 50/50. You get the cities and municipalities put in 50% of a budget. That was that number that you saw up there for this baseline year, and the private sector matches that. Now, we are in a, we are in a quiet phase of a capital campaign. We have engaged a capital campaign firm to help us do that, and we're, we will announce the public phase of this at the end of May at an annual meeting with, with everybody in attendance. As of today, I can tell you we're at about $1.3 million in, in private sector pledges right now. And so we're, we're pretty confident we're going to make our numbers, and we have, we have some, some large businesses at Centerra Town Bank have, have taken the lead in $100,000 gifts each, so they are in at this point.
Okay, thanks. Chairman.
Steve, a couple of questions. The, the financing and, and the financial reports, will they be public?
Yes, sir.
And secondly, when you say the five largest or largest cities have a prominent role, perhaps, I don't know, in decision-making or what have you, what does that mean exactly?
Well, right, as the bylaws are set up today, every, every city, whether you are Portsmouth or Pecosin, you got a seat at, at the table. And there's an equal amount from the private sector. So there's a board right away of 22 people that sit down to do business. And, and when you add to that the ex officio people, there are, there are city managers or people like me that, that also sit on that board, you quickly approach a crowd in, in terms of how you do, how you do your business of the day. So, so, so the thinking, which the bylaws committee's got to work on between now and June meeting in this thing, is it makes sense to, to maybe go with the five largest of the cities. Those are the five largest of the cities kind of took the lead on putting this agreement together, but then create at-large seats that rotate so everybody ultimately gets involved in it. And use other ex officio seats, special, special representative seats, so that we create the, you know, the representation that we need for the entire region, but that we have a governing board that, that might be able to work better with a smaller number. So that's the thinking. I don't know how that's going to go, but that's an agenda item for them to talk about.
Steve, thank you for the information. Just looking at the baseline public funding, look like it's based on population size. Is that what it is, and is it planned to increase in future years?
Yeah, our, that's a good question. We, our goal is to get to $4 million in the next three years for an annual budget. As you can see, we're not getting there this year. And so this number that you see right now is, is pretty much the same that cities have been paying for the last couple of years. It's a, pretty much a dollar per capita. Actually, I think we went to 95 cents per capita a couple of years ago. This is a dollar per capita, I think, for those numbers, except for Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach decided that they needed to stay at 400, which is a number they've been at for the last couple of years, and so that's the sole exception to that list. In the future, there are provisions in this for what's called a true-up at the end of the year. So if you're out of balance at the end of the year in terms of capital campaign, if, if the private sector hasn't raised enough money, then the public sector's obligation for the next year would be reduced, so that there's a true-up period at the end of it.
No questions.
So what are we expected to do here today?
I'm, I'm hoping that you will approve this, you give the authority to Dr. Patton to sign this agreement at some, at some point. I think that's the, that's the, on the regular agenda.
Yes.
So you are an organization dealing with businesses, and you will represent all of those cities and locales in reference to bringing cities to the area.
Businesses to the area. Yes, sir.
You will distribute and locate as the board deems.
You don't understand.
I, I'm, I'm, I don't have enough information, but as of now, there's no way I could vote yes or anything like that.
Maybe, maybe it'd be helpful to just cite a little example here, the, the announcement, the big announcement you guys had here a week or so ago.
Cold storage.
Cold storage, which, which is in business, it's in your Business Investor News Special Article this morning, to show you how this works a little bit. That, that, that firm made it known that it wanted to expand its business in the region, and it wanted to do it in Portsmouth. And, and to do that, it asked for incentives. It wanted the state, and probably Portsmouth, to help them make that happen. So our role, as in this case, as the overriding alliance, was to work with Robert and his team to go to Richmond and get the incentives to make sure that expansion happened in Portsmouth. That, that's an example of how this works. So we bring, sometimes we bring, we, everything that comes to the state, if a company and anywhere in this country decides it wants to relocate to the Commonwealth of Virginia, and they notify the Department of Economic Development in Richmond, they then distribute that information to the regional economic development activities, of which we are one. There are six of them in the state. So for our 11 cities, they would send companies that we would then get together with each one of our cities, they all get the same information, and see if we can entice that new business to come into our region. So that's one example of what we do. The other one is that we go through business retention to your existing businesses with your staff. And so if we find out that you have a business that's not doing so well, or would like to double its size, or is thinking about moving, or needs refinancing, we're going to work with that business and with your staff to keep them in Portsmouth, if that's the case, where they are. So.
Steve, would it be appropriate to kind of summarize what the Alliance does? It, it goes out on the recruiting side, and recruits businesses to come to our region. The board doesn't make the decision as to where the locale, where the business goes. That's made by the business itself.
Right. Yeah, that's, that's an important distinction. We, we work in other parts of the world, Europe. We work in this country to bring and interest companies to come to Hampton Roads. And if they, and if they are inclined to come here, if they're interested in here, how do they get here? Then we present them to the, to the 11 cities, and then if those companies decide to, to come to one of these cities, we work with that city to close that deal.
Well, I don't, I don't mean any disrespect to you or yours, but we're a small city. We're a city that is just beginning to recover from years of not being where we should have been. And I just think that our economic development would need a freer hand to bring businesses rather than to be a part of your organization. Say, for instance, if there was a, a business in Norfolk that wanted to relocate here, you could possibly stop the relocation. But anyway, at this point, nevertheless, we are a very blessed strategical location.
You are indeed.
And businesses are going to come because we distribute so much in this little, small city. And I don't want us to be put at a disadvantage. And what I'm really saying is, we haven't looked at all the avenues enough as a body to, but anything that tires this economic development's hand, I'm not for it. Or deals with bringing businesses and decide what's the best strategic place for that business, that's like giving away your birth rights. And at this point, I want us to grow, to grow first. Like I say, we're in recovery stage, and, and I think that's the best thing for us.
Okay. I'm watching the clock. Steve, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
We'll consider the master agreement at the rubber session.
Yes.
Thank you. Congressman Scott?
He's here, he's here.
We'll go to our first item. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my great pleasure to introduce somebody that really doesn't need an introduction to Portsmouth. Bobby Scott, our congressman for the third district of Virginia. If I may say, Bobby knows Portsmouth. He's here so much that I wonder if we should get him sleeping accommodations. And we certainly appreciate all that you do. He understands our economy. He's a veteran, so he understands the military history that Portsmouth has. Thank you, sir, for what you do for us, and welcome.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of council, city manager, and others. It's a pleasure to be here, and I appreciate the opportunity. As you may know, I'm having a town hall meeting later tonight, and I apologize for having it on a council meeting, but it was the only day we had during this week that we could, we could do it. And so what I'd like to do is tell you what I'm going to tell everybody else a little later, and breeze through the slides that we're going to present, and then be available for questions, comments, and whatever you'd like to, like to say.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. The 116th Congress began in January, and we, one of the first bills we passed is H.R. 1, package of reforms to strengthen our democracy by getting, trying to get money out of politics, creates automatic voter registration and improved voter registration, enhanced money for election security. We're hearing the problems with the Russian intrusion, that we need to beef up our election security, and, and upgrades disclosure for money in politics. It passed the House. The prospects in the Senate, I think, can best be described as dim. We also passed legislation for gun violence, two bills, one to increase background checks and to deal with the gun show loophole and other loopholes, and keeps guns out of those, out of the hands of those that aren't supposed to have them. It closes the Charleston loophole, which is when you get a background check, if it's not complete in three days, then you can go ahead with the sale. That was the Charleston loophole. The guy in Charleston that killed people in the church got his firearm within that, after the three-day default period. Unfortunately, a couple of days later, they figured out that he was not eligible to have a firearm, and they took immediate action and sent him a letter saying that he was not supposed to have the firearm. And by that time, he had already committed the crimes. That closes the loophole. It says that if there's a three days, you have a little extra time to get it. 90% of the background checks are completed instantaneously, 97% are completed within three days, so we're not talking about a lot of people in that. The other legislation in the first 100 days, the disaster funding that's over, that we've sent over the Senate, resolution supporting NATO access to childcare at the VA, so that when you go to the VA to get medical services, you don't have to worry about childcare. Reauthorize Violence Against Women Act, and passed legislation maintaining or restoring net neutrality. That was passed several years ago and was reversed in the last couple of years. It would restore net neutrality. The major item on the agenda is, of course, the budget. This goes back to the Nixon administration, where we, where you can see we've had some good times and some bad times. We're now in bad times, and we're looking at potential trillion-dollar deficits every, every year for the foreseeable future. The recent tax cut added 1.5 trillion with interest, almost $2 trillion to the deficit. And the only way you can restore fiscal sanity is to reverse the 1.5 trillion tax cut and the $3.9 trillion tax cut that was extended about six years ago. That's a total of about 5.4 trillion in lost revenue. The entire defense budget is only about $600 billion, 5.4, it's about 540 billion a year. We're talking about order of magnitude, the defense budget in tax cuts that have passed in the past few years. You can't do that and think you're going to have a, a sound budget. Because the numbers are so bad, instead of doing a budget, we're going to do what's called budget caps, which designate for each category of the appropriations process how much we can spend. It doesn't take much to add on what the revenues would be to complete the budget, but the fact is that nobody would want their name on a document producing those kinds of, kinds of numbers. We can function with caps. That means we can appropriate, keep the government open, and one day we'll get around to passing a decent budget. For those that say it's not a revenue problem, it's a spending problem, I just ask you to put the numbers on a page, and that's why we can't pass a budget with those numbers. The president's budget is reasonably fiscally sound with the, by cutting Social Security, massive cuts in Social Security and Medicare. The Republican Senate budget had about $800 billion over 10 years in cuts in Medicare. That will not pass Congress, and so that's really not a, not a responsible budget, but we are on the way to passing caps. As you probably know, we cut the, eliminated the community development block grant program in the president's budget. I think there's, you can expect that that will be, along with a lot of other programs, restored before we, before the bill gets through, through Congress.
Yes.
The education, as you know, I'm chairing the Education and Labor Committee, and education, the education budget is about $7 billion from 2011 up to now, about $7 billion below the inflation adjusted, what would be needed just to keep up with inflation. This year's budget comes in at another, about an eight, nine billion-dollar cut, including things like Special Olympics, but that's going to be restored. But there are a lot of other problems in, in the, in the budget. Legislation that I've introduced would create money for, to rebuild America's schools, $100 billion over 10 years. They estimate that there's about $200 billion in fixing that needs to be done to bring all our schools up to, up to code. And part of the problem is that most states are, if you do combined state and local funding, adjusted for inflation, most of the states aren't doing what they did eight years ago. In 2008, about 10 years ago. And Virginia is right there, kind of in the middle, and adjusted for inflation, about 8, 8% less than they were spending in 2008. Cost of college is going through the roof. Cost of college in the last, since the last, about 18, 19 years, has gone up 80%. The median household income has gone up about 10%. So that's one of the problems, and the cost of education, people trying to pay for, for college. States have been making a declining investment. States used to be spending about 2/3 of the cost for, for state college. Now it's less than 1/3. That difference is made up by the students, mostly in student loans. So that Pell Grant used to cover 75% of a state college education. Now it's about 25%. And add all those up together, and you get a student loan crisis. This shows the disinvestment. Virginia's there again in the middle at about 16.5% less than we're spending in 2008 on higher education, adjusted for inflation. College, college degree is still valuable. Going back to 2008, the number of jobs, you can see during the recession, the jobs have been restored and increased since the recession. If you have a four-year college degree, the next line, if you've got an associate's degree, you're doing kind of okay. But if all you got is a high school diploma, the jobs have dissolved, have evaporated and haven't come back. In the labor area, wages are not keeping up with inflation. For, for decades, the wages used to keep up with productivity. As the productivity increased, wages increased. Until about 1978 or so, when there was, hourly compensation has been stagnant, and productivity has continued to go up. The minimum wage, if it kept up with productivity, would be $19 an hour. It's still 7.25, the longest period without an increase in minimum wage in the history, in the history of the minimum wage will be achieved in, in June. So if you don't do something by then, we'll have the longest period without a minimum wage. If we just kept up with inflation since 1968, it'd be $11 today. Legislation we're considering is $15, about 2024, which is actually the same, first couple of steps of it is the same as Arkansas and Missouri passed in referendums last November. of steps of it is the same as Arkansas and Missouri passed in referendums last November. So hopefully we'll do something with the minimum wage. In terms of right now, the minimum wage, it's the bottom of 2018. Minimum wage gets you about $15,000 a year, which is below poverty for a family of two. If we pass the $15 minimum wage by 2024, you'll be above poverty for a family of four. About almost over a third of the people, almost 40% of the workers in Virginia would benefit from the minimum wage. When the minimum wage goes up, it doesn't affect just those who get the minimum wage. Those just above the minimum wage will also get an increase because if they're better than minimum wage worker, they're going to have to pay a little extra. So about 40%, including about almost half of the women in the district will get an increase with a minimum wage increase. We talked about the wage gaps. One of the easiest ways, most effective ways of dealing with the wage gap is to increase the minimum wage. In healthcare, the challenge we have now is saving the Affordable Care Act. When the Affordable Care Act passed, we had about 18% of Americans were uninsured. After the Affordable Care Act, that went down to almost 10% with a couple of other states, including Virginia, expanding Medicaid. We expect that to go down below 10%. People need to be reminded where we were before the Affordable Care Act. People with pre-existing conditions couldn't get insurance. People were losing their insurance every day. The costs, we talk about the costs going up, they've gone up, but at the lowest rate in the last 50 years. And at that point, they were going up by leaps and bounds. It was going totally out of control. There were limits on what insurance companies had to pay on a policy. There were no essential benefits. And all of those have been helped with the Affordable Care Act. We didn't cure all the problems, but we didn't cause the problems that we didn't cure. It's been sabotaged. This administration, when they first came in, cut back on advertising, which brings in healthy people into the system. The fewer people, healthy people that come in, on average, the worse it is for everybody else. In February of 2018, the attorneys generals from 20 states filed suit against the ACA. That suit unfortunately has been successful and at this point, the Affordable Care Act has been ruled totally unconstitutional. It's on appeal and the ruling has been stayed until the final ruling. But if that happens, if that is sustained, there'll be no support for premiums. There'll be no protection for pre-existing conditions. There'll be no limit on what they can charge. And we'll just go back to the good old days where insurance companies were totally in control. The Democrats have come in with the, first thing we did was a resolution to defend the case. The Trump administration indicated they will not defend the case and taking the position that the entire Affordable Care Act should be repealed. In the short term, it's causing, the fact that the case is pending, it's caused chaos. And long-term, everybody will be at risk. And all that sabotage caused Anthem a year and a half ago to just pull out of Virginia. And they put their statement was that planning and pricing for ACA plans has been increasingly difficult because continual changes and uncertainties in what the federal government was doing, including some of the tax benefits going to insurance companies and restoration of taxes, some of the things that we don't know what they're going to do. They said they just can't price their product, pulled out. Cigna indicated a 15% increase this year and said that the risk pool, the people they're going to be insuring, has been impacted by the elimination of mandates, which means a lot of healthy people aren't going to be buying insurance and regulations regarding short-term programs and what we call junk plans. That basically, healthy people buy, the sick people want the full coverage, which means that if you're covering that pool, you don't know what you're going to be covering. And so they needed a 15% increase because of those reasons. One of the problems with what they call association or short-term plans or these other plans that are not Affordable Care Act compliant, the problem is that those plans can discriminate against patients with pre-existing conditions. They can charge people more based on medical history and age, impose lifetime or annual caps, and avoid covering essential benefits. These are great if you don't need maternity care and all this other stuff. And in fact, you can pay less. The problem is arithmetic. If a group of people come out and pay less, everybody else left behind will pay more. And so that's the reason these junk plans, and if you have one of these junk plan associations where a bunch of people, young, healthy people pull out, if somebody in that group gets sick and the cost of the plan is higher than average, then the association will dissolve and everybody will jump back in the pool with their sick selves. And we have essentially provided backup insurance for them while they were enjoying lower rates. That's not fair. It's also, if you don't have the essential benefits, it makes the essential benefits become virtually unaffordable for those that need it. For example, maternity care. Everybody pays a couple of dollars a month for maternity care, whether you need it or not. If you made that optional, who would buy it? Young women expecting to have a baby within the next 12 months. At that point, it no longer becomes insurance. It becomes prepaid obstetrical care. And they're essentially paying the full freight, which would be more than $1,000 a month extra for those that want that benefit if it becomes optional. That's why everybody pays average and kind of, so everybody gets everything. And that's why the junk plans are a danger to everybody because then those that need it won't be able to afford it. We have legislation on a couple of things we've identified as improvements that need to be made. One is expands tax credits for lower premiums for middle class. You pay a percentage of your income in the exchange, up to about $100,000 a year, about 8.5%. After that, you're on your own. You're paying sticker price. So sticker price for family policy could be $15,000, which for somebody just making a little over $100,000, affordability becomes a problem. What we'd like to do is just extend, have no cliff, have 8.5% go for everybody. At some point, you're going to cover the sticker price, but everybody can get affordable insurance. If you're in small business trying to get insurance and making over $100,000 a year, you're right now paying sticker price, whether it's affordable or not. That would eliminate that problem for small businesses that are just over the limit. The family glitch is if your employer is providing affordable coverage, then you can't buy, you can't get insurance in the exchange. You don't need it. But if they're not, what if they're not covering your family at an affordable rate? They could be paying 50, 75% of your premium, but charging you sticker price for the rest of the family. Now all of a sudden, it's not affordable. Well, we didn't think of that and that's a glitch that we need to fix. Since you ought to be able to get everybody in this exchange and get affordable coverage, that glitch needs to be affected. We fund outreach and enrollment, making sure that people are, we're going out outreach and advertising to make sure that everybody's buying insurance, more people buy insurance, the cheaper it is for everybody. We stabilize premiums through a reinsurance program, helping insurance companies with their, being able to predict what they're doing. And it eliminates regulations which have essentially undermined pre-existing condition protections. That legislation is pending in the House. We're going to have markups on it pretty soon. But that's what we've been doing. I look forward to comments you may have. I'm sure you've got projects you want us working on and now is the time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to be with you.
Thank you, sir. That was real comprehensive. Let's have questions. Questions from anybody?
Congressman Scott, one of the arguments to raising the minimum wage that you hear commonly is that it'll slow down productivity. Businesses won't be able to afford to be able to compete. It'll take away a competitive edge for businesses. What's your response to that?
Well, first of all, usually it costs jobs and all of the studies have shown that, and they've got studies on both sides. If you add them all up and do a bell curve, the bell curve is at zero. There's no effect on jobs. In terms of productivity, enhanced productivity, people, if you need, if you're low income and losing your house and having financial problems, you're less productive than if you can pay your bills. So all the productivity, I haven't heard is a problem. Most of the argument they try to say is on the loss of jobs and all of the studies are clear on that. There's one proposal for regional minimum wage by metropolitan statistical area, which is for low-income areas, so just lock in low pay for low-income areas. They're paid less for a reason. A lot of them, particularly in rural areas, if you've got a one-company town, you expect to work, you get what they give you. You have no negotiation and it's a right-to-work state. They probably don't have unions where you can actually negotiate. Inflicting them with a subminimum wage would just encourage that kind of situation. And so every time they've raised the minimum wage, if it's gradual, it's had no effect on employment.
I have two questions and they're somewhat related. Military Construction, our largest employer in the region, its fourth largest is a shipyard. The funding for the optimization model now is the shipyard, is that in jeopardy, that $20 billion?
We don't know yet. It's going to be competing with the border wall and hopefully we'll get through this budget situation. I think that the agreement so far is that things that have been appropriated are safe. Things that think they're going to get appropriated will be in jeopardy. I think there's significant opposition to diverting money into something that hadn't been appropriated. We'll just have to see this uncertainty.
And that makes the next point really uncertain. And that is, we're the home of two Coast Guard commands, the 5th Coast Guard District. The Hampton Road Sector is bifurcated. They have part of the command at Coast Guard Base Portsmouth and the other part downtown at the federal building. Would be really efficient to have them all in one building and one that would be hurricane-proof. And I know that that's on your agenda.
Yeah. Well, we don't know. One challenge we have, we've had for about, I guess, the last eight or nine years or so, is the absence of earmarks. We could have just put something like that in the budget and it was done. Now you pass overall budget and the executive branch gets to divvy up the money. So when you have uncertainty on the first part of your question, you're going to have uncertainty on the others. We'll keep pushing for that.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Are there any other alternatives other than raising the minimum wage to close the gap for the disparity between the women's wages?
Raising the minimum wage is the most effective way of doing it. Earned income tax credit is an expensive way to do it, but it also achieves the same goal, but it's extremely expensive. If you're talking about raising it, the tax expenditure is expensive. So I mean, you like to, but the advantage of the earned income tax credit is the burden of raising everybody's wages is shared by everybody, not just the businesses paying low-income workers. So an increase in the earned income tax credit would help, but I mean, a dollar an hour costs $2,000 per person to get a dollar increase. If you're talking several dollars an hour, to do that with the earned income tax credit would cost thousands of dollars and just multiply that by the millions of people who would benefit and it becomes expensive.
What can we do to help you?
Make sure that you let me know what your projects are and let me know what I need to be fighting for.
Well, thank you for the fight that you carry on for us. Really appreciate it. Any other, I'm protecting your time. I know that you've got a church.
I think we're good. I appreciate the opportunity of being here.
Oh, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay.
Sherri took a second.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I have the following items I will be presenting this evening. The first will be a FY 2020 general operating and capital budget report back. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, after reviewing and reflecting on the work session discussion by City Council regarding your priorities for the FY 2020 budget, I'm proposing an alternative funding option for your consideration this evening, rather than taking funding out of the city's fund balance. The total amount identified from City Council's decisions on last night is $2.6 million. That include addressing the $2.6 million increase for the Portsmouth Public Schools' local share, for funding the salary increases for teachers and employees in the school system, $10,000 for the food bank, which we introduced and showed last night, and $50,000 if in fact, City Council determines the proposed cultural harmony committee. To address this deficit, City staff reviewed proposed revenues and expenditure projections. As part of the alternative funding option, revenue projections for the proposed personal property and sales and use taxes were slightly adjusted to project an increase in those taxes for FY 2020. In consultation with the city attorney, the elimination of the VIG reserve of $1.78 million is being proposed. In addition, the reallocation of the $113,375 proposed for the city auditor department and slightly increasing the projected budget for the allowance for salary service savings will bring us to the amount that is necessary. All of these adjustments provide the proposed alternative funding option for your consideration, thereby eliminating the need to use the fund balance, or propose a tax weight increase for meows or the real estate, and ensures government efficiency and protection over the city's financial resources.
Good job. This protects the fund balance. Are you on board with this recommendation? Is anybody not on board? Let me put it that way. Okay.
All right. We have three more items to bring before you that you considered last night and we're coming back for your direction. One is the HRA, you can take that off and just leave it blank. One is the HRA, which we discussed last night, which is the health for the retirees that are 65 and older. We want, I would need your direction. We recommend that that remain as is. That's the $1,400 going forward until the persons that are in it are no longer here to need it. And with your concurrence, we will leave that as is.
Senator, okay, were there any?
Yes.
Paul?
All right. The next is the $200 retirement allowance. We discussed that last night. We provided you information. There was some discussion. It is in the budget as we shared with you. With your concurrence, we will go in whatever direction you choose. Leave it there or what would you like to consider?
I'll start the conversation.
I recommend that we leave it there.
I recommend that we leave it there.
Okay, Kirk.
I agree.
I agree. Paul.
Okay.
All right. The last is the retiree $100 or 1/2 of percent. And I have some remarks that I'd like to bring to your attention and seek your direction. On last night, we had a discussion where we started with the retiree $100, and then it ebbed into a percentage. And the team has been working all day. Due to the complexity of the City Council's request on the $100 to a 1/2 percent of funding increases for retirees, I have requested staff to continue to work with John Hancock Actuarial, Andre Stewart, who they have been in constant contact with, to provide accurate information for City Council's consideration. This decision will be impacted by the 2019 actuarial analysis that does not come forward until October. We shared with you some time ago that the actuaries changed in 2018, which we have the 2018 actuaries, but in October, we will have the 2019 actuaries that will affect our retirement costs that are going forward. With that said, that information is not available to October. We do not want to give you information that is inaccurate. We do not want to calculate when we know that, as our actuarial is saying, that will all change come October of 2019, which is not far away. So, I am asking that you allow us to continue this process, bring it back to you, once we get the October 20 actuaries, and you can act on it at any time as we go forward.
All right. Can we make it retroactive to July 1 when we act?
I'll yield to Mr. Ashby on that one.
That's certainly a consideration, ma'am. That's a consideration.
Again, I'll start the conversation, given the fact that, based on your answer, I would be okay to wait until October.
And all the time, the team will be working.
Shannon, we'll start from right.
Well, you know, what we decided the other night, we charged the manager and her staff with looking into it. I think that's not unreasonable, to give it some more time so that we understand the decision that we're making, and that we're putting and making it.
Okay.
Yeah, and I mean, yeah, that's the thing. We've got to know where the money is and where the money's coming from. But, you know, I know what you requested last night was the cost of what it would be on those increments. So, I guess that's something that we, you know, we need to hear that as well.
I think City Manager and our team has done a great job. We asked for a percentage rather than a flat fee, and if we need more time to look at that, then I'm on board with whatever time we need to make the right decision.
And what you're saying, if I understood you correctly, you're recommending that we do the percentage on the 2019 actuarial report, not the 2018?
Because the 2018 will not be effective when the 19 comes out.
Well, it looks like we have a consensus to do that. I'm in favor of it. It is retroactive. July 1st.
Well, is there any way that we can subsidize that until then?
We don't have the information to subsidize, sir.
No, I mean, from anywhere else, get the funds from anywhere else.
Well, what we are trying to do is...
Subsidize it until October, until we get the information back that's needed.
What I'm sharing with you, as your request, we provided the numbers for the fire and police, and the numbers for those who are in the Portsmouth supplemental, which is about 1,000 people. Even if we dealt with just 600, you would have to have the actuaries of all of those in order to do the percentage, which every individual's would be different. There is no flat-across-the-board decision that could be made on this matter, because every individual's percentages would be different based on what their retirement figures are.
Well, what figures were we working with prior to this, when we talked about 1/2 percent it would take to include them?
We were not working with...
Well, let me say this. I'll make a long story short. I don't know everything there is to know, but all I'm saying is, I would feel more comfortable including them at the onset, rather than, the retroactive is fine when we get there, but I would feel better including them at this point.
Okay. All right. Well, we have a consensus on waiting until 2019, on the basis that if we take action, that it's retroactive.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. All right. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I would like to provide a report back and an update on enhancing E-911. Tonight, I'll review with you the steps we are taking to address enhancing E-911 in Portsmouth. You may recall that during the May 18, 2018 public work session, staff briefed City Council on the next-generation upgrades to include the EZNet infrastructure. Today, I had the city clerk to put in your box that PowerPoint presentation and a summary of what I'm sharing with you right now. From that presentation, staff identified three target areas for enhancement, and they are carrier legacy equipment, point of origination, and the volume of calls, and I will speak to each of those. In the carrier legacy equipment, the time from when a citizen's 911 call is connected by the carrier into the Portsmouth Public Safety Answering Point, which is known as PSAP, there is a delay on the average of six to eight seconds. The delay is due to the carrier's legacy equipment, which is at the end of its life cycle and needs to be replaced by EZNet. This impacts the point of origination of the call. The point of origination, when a citizen initiates a 911 call, the point of origination is important, because the equipment leading to the residence could be legacy equipment. In addition, the point of origination could be an analog line, VoIP or Voice Over Internet protocol. It could be a cellular, which, depending upon signal level, would pose a difficulty. The volume of calls, when a call, when a citizen call goes unanswered, the call is flagged as a hangup, and is placed into a query for a priority call backup by the first dispatcher available. Most often, callbacks to the citizens go unanswered, possibly because of the factors above, or the citizen does not recognize the unidentifiable number. To address the targeted areas, we are taking multifaceted approaches. The first is addressing carrier legacy equipment and point of origination. Portsmouth has executed and notified the State 911 Services Board of our EZNet provider being AT&amp;T, and procurement through the state and Fairfax County contracts. This technology will upgrade all existing legacy technology on the carrier and provide fast and reliable service from the point of origination to the Portsmouth PSAP.
Is this equipment or software?
This is a, both. Both. The new dispatcher recruitment. In the fall of 2018, Human Resource Management began the new recruitment effort to hire 911 dispatchers using the critical software that offers a more comprehensive test and ability to remotely test applicants. We made this presentation and discussed it with you, and shared with you that there was a recent article when we had the presentation in USA Today in regard to the critical need for dispatchers across the nation. Since October 9, 2018, Human Resource Management remotely tested 163 applicants, resulting in 26 candidates who passed the test and have been interviewed. To expedite the recruitment process, all applicants completed the background information and were fingerprinted on the same day as their interview. From this process, seven 911 dispatchers began their employment with the City of Portsmouth on February 11, 2019. They are spending their first six to nine months in training and learning how to properly dispatch and respond to calls before migrating to the 911 center. Three, creation of the 311 Call Center. One of the things that I shared in the fall when we made the presentation is that, right now, all calls go into 911. Doesn't matter if I need to ask a question about when is the show at the pavilion? Is the cat in the tree? Whatever call, because we do not and did not have the 311 Call Center, all calls go into 911. To eliminate the number of non-emergency calls feeding into the 911 system, we are creating a 311 Call Center to respond to routine calls from our citizens. It will serve as a centralized hub to manage and monitor all citizen communications. The anticipated launch of this Call Center is May of 2019. Questions?
With this, with the additional personnel, can we cut down the number of calls that are waiting?
Yes, because we won't be having calls that are non-emergency going in there. And these positions are part-time, starting as part-time.
Do you have a statement? Reference to your references into the 911 hangups, and everything's dispatched on priority, depending on the nature of the call. And it's kind of disturbing, I saw somebody made a post recently on social media that they were telling people to call and hang up, and the police will come to your house and get faster response. Because when there's a true 911 hangup, the thought is, somebody could have a medical condition and can't speak to you, could be something happened right then, so it's a high priority. And somebody was putting that information out to try to do that. And, you know, that's a scary thought, that if somebody has a minor issue and they're using that, and they use that as a priority call, if there's another priority issue in the city, you know, they're diverted from that location. So, you know, that's something that the police department probably needs to look at and see if that falls under making a false call to the 911 system, because that could potentially, you know, pose a life-threatening risk to another citizen that really needs somebody.
Other comments or questions?
Just the 311 Call Center, how is that going to be advertised? I mean, how the public going to know to...
We will have a campaign, Vice Mayor, that will take effect probably a couple of weeks before we begin it. And then, we'll have it online, and we will speak to it through our staff, talking with civic leagues and in civic league meetings.
That's the question I had, but I do have a budget question as well.
Any other question on 911? Can we close out 911?
Yeah, we can close 911.
Any other questions on 911? Okay.
Okay.
On the, in the budget, the 2% general wage increase, now that's for general wage employees, not fire and police?
That's for every city employee, and I had in there those who...
We may want to make that clear, because I know if you go online, the budget at a glance, it just says general wage. I know in the past, general wage usually stipulated that's city employees, not fire and police.
I'll let Mrs. Gooden speak to general wage employees includes fire and police.
Yes, it includes fire and police. We took...
They are city employees. We don't know where that disclaimer came.
We referred to it as a general wage increase, otherwise known as a GWI. It does cover our general employees, and also covers our public safety employees. We did have some communication to clarify that out. We had both chiefs to report that back to all of their employees to make sure they're aware, sir.
Very good. I've had some questions about that. And the 3% wage increase for constitutional offices, is that for their employees?
Yes, that's for their employees. That's in the governor's budget, and that will be coming...
And that's employees?
Right.
Okay. Thanks. All right.
9/11.
You have a question? Yes, sir.
9/11, I mean, this system you're referring to puts the calls in a certain order, chronological order, interruptions to the need?
Mr. Jones, the calls that come in for the 911, they come in in an order, or how is that? Yes?
Hurry, please. And has there been, and what type of liabilities involved with it not functioning on the level that it should function?
Good evening, Councilman. As a 911 call comes into our PSAP, it comes in on a, when it actually rings, on basically a first concern, sir. So, if we both dial it, PSAP first is first in line, to be answered by the dispatcher. And then, as Mr. Councilman Clark said, as a dispatcher prioritizes a three orders of the call, then that's the level of priority of service going to the citizen.
Okay. Thank you.
Liability question. Solomon, can you...
In turn, help me understand what you're asking, Councilman.
In obtaining the records from the system, it is noted that several folk had a real need over someone else, and the order that it was in didn't meet that lead that it put it in. Is there any liability involved with that? Has there been any liability involved with it? From where we are securing the system, have we asked them those questions?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, to my knowledge, there has not been a question about the E-911 system. There have been other matters that have been pending. Of course, we always get 911 calls and some concerns. To my knowledge, I don't think we have a system problem, if I'm answering your question.
I didn't say that we had a system problem. What I'm saying is, is there any liability possibly involved with the new system?
Oh, with the new system.
Does it have a record in the past of liability? I'm only trying to protect the taxpayers' money here.
We have not done an assessment of the new system to see if it has brought about other issues. I'm sure it's been vetted from a technical standpoint, but we don't typically vet products from a liability standpoint.
We can't vet them. I mean, have we asked the people we're getting the service from, has there been any liability? Other cities, what's the liability? Have you had any liability problems with that?
I can only speak to analogous systems, electronic systems we had in the city, and certainly all of the IT directors in the various cities. When we have new product or requests, they certainly vet those issues amongst the industry in order to find out if there are issues. And we have had pushback, the city has pushed back on some new upgrades that have been requested in the city, where we have reason to believe those systems were not capable of performing or would create issues and additional expenses for the city.
Service providers are comfortable with this?
Dr. Pam?
Yes. As I shared in my presentation, that everyone across the country is moving from the legacy system, which is the old telephones at your house that you've got to pick up and answer. The EZNet is where we are moving to. We, all cities in Hampton Roads and across the country are moving to that, because that's going to be the techno, that is the technology that is coming across for use with 911. So, we are the first city in Hampton Roads to be in a position to submit our proposal of clearance through the state for our 911 EZNet...
of clearance through the state for our 911 easy net, not acquisition, but setup, to move forward. So we are there, we're leading the region, and all other cities in the region will be doing the same thing. That will be the system, that is the system of the future.
And if I recall, in the presentation we had on the system in the past, this will eventually be the system, as everybody gets on board in the country, our dispatcher could hit a button and transfer somebody to a police department dispatch in California, as opposed to looking up a phone number and transferring them. So the system is going to be, once everybody's on board, it's going to be a better way of communication for everybody, everywhere. It's just a great advancement, once we get it going.
The city manager report on the agenda, the regular agenda, any questions on that? Do you want to cover anything?
These are...
We have a public hearings tonight, again, on the budget, and we have the second reading of the use permit, and we also have the special presentation of foster parents.
Right. I think, Mayor, all you have on the agenda for city manager report are some grants, which are small amounts in nature, and then the allowance.
Let's go to the City Council liaison reports. Do you have any reports, liaison reports?
No.
I attended the Historic Preservation Commission meeting, a couple of items, product approvals, expansion approvals, additions, what have you. Also attended the EDA meeting. There was a property acquisition in the Newport area that was approved. Other than that, then we'll be discussing boards and commissions tonight, Mayor.
No reports from you?
Yes, we had the Hampton Roads Regional Jail Authority Board meeting. We met on April 17th. It's good news report. Medical, the expenditures have gone down. Basically, the month prior to the meeting, they said our expenditures on medication for HIV was $86,641, which is down, because it had been consistently over $100,000 a month. They said they had 12 TDOs, individuals were transferred from that facility to the eastern state. As far as, also with medical, they have 14 females that are pregnant. Three of them are getting opiate maintenance. We have 16 cancer patients. We have 25 individuals that are over the age of 65, and we have three paraplegics in the facility. The current head count, as of the date we had a meeting, there was 966 individuals in the facility. A report from HR, there is only 11 vacancies at this current time. There are 14 new recruits that are currently being trained. There's some in the Hampton Roads Regional Criminal Justice Training Academy, some are attended Norfolk Sheriff's Academy, and some are in Portsmouth Sheriff's Academy. So they all will be graduating soon to help complement the facility. It's told us maintenance issues, said information on mental health, we had 16 discharges that are getting assistance, and there's 11 individuals that have been released that are getting transitional housing assistance. And another good news was, there was an issue in the past where there was improper billing. Some people that had been released from the facility went to seek treatment in various medical facilities, and when their name came up, it looked like they were still under the housing at the regional jail, so they were billed for their medical. So basically, there was $377,000 returned from Optima back to the regional jail authority. That's it.
Chen?
No reports, only the update is that I'll be meeting, as the council liaison to Tidewater Community College in Portsmouth, I'll be meeting on the 25th with Dr. Reynolds.
The TPO met last week. VDOT presented its alternatives for the design of Bowers Hill. Chesapeake, Portsmouth, and Suffolk have agreed to work together to make sure that the three cities are on the same page, because that interchange affects traffic into Portsmouth on 264 and even on 164. Yes?
Will you finish, Mayor?
That's my liaison report.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, as your southeastern public service authority representative, I sent you all some information about the budget that is to be voted on tomorrow. One of the issues, as I explained in your email, SIPSA has been very fortunate, and I will say in its history, of providing COLAs. They have a pay plan in place, proposed for next month's budget, that would both raise the maximum pay for its heavy equipment operators and some of its mechanics, as well as lower the, raise the minimum pay. This is not necessarily an issue of living wage, the fees and the payouts were significant. However, I raised this issue last year, because SIPSA has had a nice nine-year run of raising COLAs, and this year, for some of the employees, they will either get a $5,000 minimum or a 2.5% COLA in this nine-year run. My concern is that the savings from, if they had approached the COLA issue and the pay plan issue a little differently, it may help us as localities level off our tipping fee for two years, as opposed to a one-year adjustment. And so with, I wanted to bring that to your attention, and if I can get your concurrence, I will raise that issue tonight with the rest of my colleagues and see if we can't get SIPSA to appreciate that there are not many jurisdictions who can have a nine-year run of increases. And this present, puts us in a bit of a difficult situation as a member jurisdiction.
All right. Anybody have any problems with that?
No, not at all.
So, when you go to the meeting, you can say you've discussed this with council, and you're speaking for council?
Sure.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Council members.
We decided last night that we put for discussion the proposal to create the Cultural Harmony I propose that we do it. Anybody against it?
Well, I have a comment.
What is it?
Before we go forward, I wanted to make a statement.
Go ahead.
Members of council, I applaud the efforts to bring about improved racial harmony and cultural understanding to the citizens of the Portsmouth family. Mayor, on Friday, April 9th, we received an email with an attached letter referencing a dissolved cultural diversity committee from some time ago, to address racial issues of harmony, equity, fair treatment, and cultural sensitivity. Unfortunately, there was never any discussion amongst council members to weigh in on the matter and give our perspective. Moreover, the sensitive nature and potential for misunderstanding of what council was attempting to achieve with this effort warranted a special call meeting for discussion and thoughtful consideration. An email is not a discussion. Yesterday, we were presented with a proposed charter for Cultural Awareness Committee from you. I am troubled by the announcement and have reservations about the timing of this proposal. Under the guiding principles that we agreed upon at our retreat in February, we decided that we would speak as one voice, and there would be no surprises. I am disappointed that you chose to go to the media with this proposal prior to discussing it with the entire council. Each member of this council is equally yoked. No one has authority or power over the other. I am not sure who appointed you with the authority to act in this manner, but you did. One of the words we like to throw around is trust. In leadership, trust is earned, not given or assumed. Secondly, you seem to have committed the council to a $50,000 budget towards this effort without any consultation. As a result, you have disregarded our agreed-upon guiding principles. You appear to want to lead this body in a manner where you have deemed yourself the ultimate authority. We were all elected to serve the citizens of Portsmouth. No one has any more authority than the other. I pray that this council can continue to build trust and share information more openly and with input from all. Together, we will all be better. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that chastisement. The email said that this was a proposal, and I recommended that we discuss it. I do not have the authority to speak for you or any other member of council, but I feel that, just like anybody sitting on council, has the right to bring forth a proposal. We're not clairvoyant, and so there has to be a way to get the proposal before us. And that way was last Friday, through an email that everybody got. And if you read the email very carefully, it says "proposal." Now, if you don't like the proposal, that's fine. You ought to say so. But don't kill the way it was done. Your criticism, I hear it, but it's unfounded. There was no attempt to preempt council. I recommended that we discuss this last night, which we did. Everybody in agreement last night, so let's discuss it tonight. If you don't like the idea, then say so. If you have a better idea, put it on the table. I'm not going to be offended by it at all. But, you know, if the rubric is not, be quiet. The only way that we can discuss anything is for somebody to advance an idea. Bill advanced an idea about retirement. You didn't go off on Bill.
Well, first of all, it's not about Bill, but this is not about Bill. This is about you and me talking.
No. Will you hear me?
I'm going to hear you, but don't include Bill in the discussion.
Look, I've got the floor.
Okay.
All right. The point of the matter is, is that we have, each have a right to bring issues to the table, without recourse from any other member of council. And I use Bill as an example, because Bill brought the insurance, not the insurance, but the retirement, to the table. All right, so how will issues get before us if we don't bring the issues before us? And so, thank you for your criticism, but I still bring this forward as a proposal for council to discuss, consider, dismiss it, not do it, change it. I propose it. And let's have a, let's have a discussion about the concept, and not about the method of how it got here. So with that, Paul?
Well, first of all, racism, and the true definition, is a self-induced cultural sickness. And in our society, as in many other societies, it seems as if folk are afraid to diagnose Until we face that reality, that it's a sickness, and you need therapists and doctors to address that situation, and not a board of laymen, we're not going to get anywhere. Now, however, my very nature is, oh, whose intent, and it's not going to hurt anything, let's try it. So, yes, I'll be favorable to try a board, or that sort of thing. But our country and our planet run from the self-induced cultural sickness of racism, with 22% of our citizens in this country inflicted by it. Very well prevalent in older white men and females. And until we face the reality of it, and call it a sickness, and get the folk treatment, for years, we haven't gotten anywhere, because we don't want to diagnose it and face the reality of it. And there are ways to evaluate when a person is sick, such as when they can't control aggression or angle toward minorities, or they go into sessions to plot and plan things that would do harm to minorities. So, that is the factual reference and the total gamut of what racism is, and how to identify the problems where you know a person is sick, and what it takes to really treat it. But however, again, if we got a board, and that's what we're working toward, I'm for it. But let's not leave out the reality of it.
Okay. Any other comments?
Okay, me, yes. Well, I originally thought that it might be a good idea. I didn't know how the previous board came to be, where the 1990 group that was in place. I was a little suspect about the timing of it coming now, especially at the end of our budget season, at a time when there's an investigation of our chief of police, at a time when reports are being released about race relations and the racial divide in our city. I don't know how we came up with $50,000. I don't know how we pick how many whites and how many blacks are on there, because there were, the past group had six whites and four blacks, and then it fizzled out. So do they just take $50,000 and run with it, and spend it on things that we don't know, we can't control, and then it's over? I think we need to look at this at some point in time, but I just think right now, it's too much sensitivity going on with the issues that are going to be played out, the investigation. I think we need to do it, but we need to be on hold. I also propose to members of council, I'm sitting on this task force with Virginia Humanities and the Hampton Roads Community Foundation, they will be hosting a race conversation, where Beverly Tatum, who is the author of Why Are All the Black Kids Sitting Together in the Cafeteria? I invited all of us to go to that, so that we could see, you know, what's going on regionally, to try to get an appetite for a direction on which way we want to, you know, take this matter. So I will be on board for it, but right now, I think it's too much sensitivity going on with everything else that's happening in the city.
Bill?
I support the concept, and just listening here, we left the retreat in February, where I thought we had good cohesion, good chemistry, and good communication. And I would hope that each of us can communicate with one another without having prepared statements. If I have a problem with Nathan, or with you, Paul, or any of us, I'm going to pick the phone up, or I'm going to make it a point, let's meet for lunch, and let's discuss it without a prepared statement. I do think some of the so-called racial divide has been perpetuated by, in some cases, the media. I think they exacerbate the situation. We had a, anytime, I would like to think in 2019, we don't have to, or the media shouldn't be counting votes by, there were, you know, three blacks and four whites. By golly, can't we have a philosophical divide without an outside organization labeling it whites and blacks? I mean, come on now, it's 2019. And that particular vote certainly had no racial connotation whatsoever. Do I think that we need something like this? Yeah, I think we need to further the conversation. I guess my questions about the committee would be, is it going to be part of our boards and commissions? I think it should be. I think all of us should have people... I think all of us should have people that we would offer up to serve on the committee. I think there are a lot of details to work out other than approving it right now. I think there's a lot more discussion. I would like to hear from some community leaders on maybe the composition, what they would expect the results to be in such a committee. In fact, the one that was in place some years ago, somebody said 1990, long before I got here, just a few years ago, I had suggested that we needed something like that to...
Previous council.
Previous council. So I support it. I think there's more work to do to ensure its success. So, yeah, I'm on board with it. From that.
Yeah, I'm supportive, and, but I agree with, you know, a lot of the comments that have been made. It's not something that we need to rush into. I think there is a need for it. You know, through my career, I've been fortunate enough to attend, you know, numerous cultural diversity courses and stuff like that, because, you know, an individual's perception is their reality, and we need to respect that of other people. And, you know, I've been very fortunate to learn from these classes. And, you know, to Lisa's point, you know, talking about the makeup of this possible committee, to me, the makeup should reflect the population of the community we're serving. So, you know, it should be based on the numbers of population. That way, the citizens are represented fairly and equally throughout the whole city. So I'm on board with doing it, but I agree, I think we, you know, it's not something to jump into. You know, I'm for it, but we do need to have more discussions and figure out, because I'm always on board with anything that I think can make any relationship in our citizen and citizens to get along better. So I'm for it in that respect. I just think we need some more discussion.
Let me, I'm trying to give everybody a chance to speak. I really haven't spoken to the issue. This, my goal was to initiate a conversation. Mentioned board, I don't see this as a board. A board carries some type of authority. This is a committee. Our community is owned by our citizens, not by, not by a board. And that's why I would propose that it be a citizens-populated committee. We need to learn how to act as human beings. And it's, it's difficult to avoid the truth when people sit around the table and talk about issues face-to-face. It's difficult for someone to duck. They have problems of centuries of social injustice, lack of equal opportunity in all aspects of life, equity, cultural diversity. Those things we need to put on the table and let our citizens discuss it. I picked fifty, I had to pick some number. If you don't like fifty, if you put another number there. I picked sixteen to twenty-two. Just like we heard today, you can get too big, and it's a crowd. So I don't know what the magic number is. But my goal was to do exactly what was done tonight, which was to have a discussion. And if we can't bring table, things to the table to discuss, then we might as well quit as a city council. Each one of us have an obligation to bring an idea to the table. And we shouldn't criticize each other for bringing ideas to the table. I think the comments are good. I think that we need to further discuss this. I like the idea of having a larger community discussion. I think there is a sense of urgency. I don't know the structure, I saw the minutes of the 1990s, I did do that research. I don't know the size, and I don't know the composition. You saw the article that was published by Jordan, that was a private sector account. And so we need, we need further discussion on this. Again, we accomplished, I think, a lot tonight in even talking about it.
I did want to make one point clear. I am absolutely for bringing our city together and bringing the parties together to discuss these matters. I'm intimately in agreement with that. And I want to thank you too, Bill, for what you said. I think it was prudent, it was right online, and I agree that we should sit back and look at this thing, have some discussion, bring some other folks to the table that have had experiences and that could provide input, and then make an informed decision rather than a rushed decision.
It is a case in point of how careful you have to be dealing with the racial issue. Those items that you just called off, they are items that are the results of racism. So whenever we're going to attack this situation, we have to put a program together, a strategic program that professional folk have to put together. We can't throw a ball like this in the average citizen's hand because they don't have the experience. I mean, you have to have, you have to be able to write this program, and everybody has to read it, go over it, and accept it. So when we are just plucking citizens up, we're asking too much of them, unless they're therapists, unless they're doctors, who have had the formal and the informal training of sitting on the back of the bus, of, in the shipyard, not being able to be a mechanic. I mean, you have to have the experience, a greater variety of experience than a single doctor, or a single citizen, or a single therapist. But I love it, and if we can put something down together like that, that would be good. But that's not, as things of our citizens, that sounds good, and it is good, but we're really asking too much of them. We are putting them in the middle of the Elizabeth River without, you know, life jacket.
Are you all willing that we find a date in May and have, let's say, a working lunch in this room? And when it's not bound and restricted by times? And that it might be useful to get the budget behind us? And look at the second half of May, like a Wednesday, and I'm just talking off the top of my head, Wednesday at lunch, and continue this discussion. May's just around the corner.
Yeah.
But we should wait. I mean, we need, we need to have that discussion. Can you, are we in agreement with that?
I agree, sure, yes.
I didn't see.
Yes.
Can you and the city clerk work?
Yes, we will.
On getting a date?
Yes.
And just block off the whole afternoon, so that we're not restricted by time? And so if you'll poll council, come up with some dates?
We will.
And the day of the week.
We got it.
I was just thinking, if it goes off, we just had to add a snack in there.
Some cookies, cookies.
Can I ask a question, ma'am?
Go ahead.
The question I was going to ask of council, that which I have put before you today as the proposed alternative funding, did you want me to report that tonight in the seven o'clock session? Okay.
What'd you say?
The fifty thousand?
No, no.
No, she's talking about the whole thing.
Oh, yes.
That's what I'm, because how would we, how would it be known if...
Well, I was going to announce too, the action of council at the start of the public hearing.
That's what I'm asking, how do you all want to do?
On a unanimous basis to provide additional funding for the schools for their budget year 1920 in the amount of 2.6. And then, how about if I turn to you to explain what it might come from?
Okay, okay, if that's what I was asking.
Yes.
Okay. All right, good.
We need, we need a closed session.
Got to go quick.
And before we take a motion, we've got some serious stuff that we need to talk about. I propose that we, we watch the clock and finish at seven, even though we not finished the closed session at the close of the regulation, that we have a motion to go back into closed session to finish the items. Does that agree with everybody? Yes.
I move to go into a closed meeting, A, pursuant to Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711, A3, for the purpose of discussing the disposition of real property where discussion in open meeting adversely affected bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically regarding casino development, and B, pursuant to Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711, A1, for the purpose of discussing and considering prospective candidates and appointees for boards and commissions, and C, pursuant to Virginia Code Subsection 2.2-3711, A8, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specifically legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel specifically regarding the Portsmouth Police Department.
Any discussion on the motion that's been made in seconds? Madam clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Glover?
Yes.
Mrs. Lucas Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Mooney?
Yes.
Mr. Msappson, Mayor Rowe?
Yes, we're in closed session.